Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's regular City Commission meeting for September 7th, 2021. Tabitha Rolcall, please.
Here. Commissioner Beth Reeves, active this evening, Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Maddie.
Here.
And Commissioner Wolpert.
Present.
Tonight, we have our invocation from Pastor David Crook from First Southern Baptist Church.
Excuse me, everybody. What shall we pray and ask God for tonight?
I'll tell you, we've got a big 150th celebration coming up this weekend. Hopefully, weather holds and we get lots of people out. So that's what I'm hoping for this week.
Absolutely. I know we've been hit hard lately with the COVID thing, too. So a lot of people, some will pray for our hospital staff and doctors and everybody who had it. Let's pray together. God, we come to you and we are grateful that you are mindful of our plight, that you are always aware of what we're going through, and that you know the conditions of our world, of our lives, of our souls, of our thoughts, of our hearts. You know what we worry about, you know what we wrestle with. You're a good God who is attentive, and so it is a privilege to be able to come to you and you hear us. Lord, we want to pray for this wonderful city that we call home, and we pray that you would bless us. It be warm but not too warm, may it be sunny but not too sunny, may it, Lord, just be a beautiful day for us to celebrate as a community, and may it bring us together. And then I pray, Lord, for the tent revival that's going to be happening all week, and pray that you would show up in greater ways then. We need good weather for that, and we pray that you would encourage the people of this city, that we would be able to celebrate being alive again. For God, we stand at a time where we haven't felt very alive for a good long time. We've been under the threat of a pandemic, we've been under division in politics and in families and in every level of society. And God, we need to feel alive again, and so I pray that your Spirit would cause us to see that. Please, oh God, be with our healthcare workers that are in the throes of a lot of miserable decisions. Lord, I know we have people that are suffering from COVID, both vaccinated and unvaccinated. We have people who are having to quarantine again, who thought they were through this once before. And oh God, we just want to pray that you would deliver us from this pestilence. We have sought so much of humane solutions to this and have neglected to cry out to you. And God, we still find ourselves searching. So maybe we can just search to you and you would deliver us. It is our prayer, oh God, that this be done with, that it be destroyed, that the virus would die and that the pestilence would cease. It may be proof of your existence, proof of your hand, proof of your concern in our lives. May it be, oh God, something that you give the credit for. We love you and we are grateful for this wonderful city. We love her and we pray for her leaders, that tonight you would guide and lead them. It is in Christ's name that I pray.
Would everyone please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. I have a couple of proclamations this evening. The first one is for Suicide Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness surrounding each of the suicide prevention resources available to us and our community. The simple goal is to learn how to help those around us and how to talk about suicide without increasing the risk of harm. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income, level, religion, or background. And whereas, according to the CDC, each year more than 41,000 people die by suicide. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death among adults in the United States and the 2nd leading cause of death among people ages 10 to 24. And whereas the city of El Dorado is no different than any other community in the country, but chooses to publicly state and place our full support behind local educators, mental health professionals, athletic coaches, PAC leaders, police officers, parents, and parents as partners in supporting our community and simply being available to one another. And whereas local organizations like Journey to Recovery and national organizations like the National Alliance on Mental Illness are on the front lines of a battle that many still refuse to discuss in public as suicide and mental illness remain too taboo a topic to speak. And whereas every member of our community should understand that throughout life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that we are all silently fighting our own battles. Whereas I encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors over the next few days and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. A simple phone call, a message, a handshake, or a hug can go a long way toward helping someone realize that suicide is not the answer. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Bill Young, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas to be affixed this 7th day of September 2021.
So I'm here to speak.
I, sure.
I got a message that I was supposed to speak after you read the proclamation. So I just did want to speak up because a lot of people don't know what Journey to Recovery is. And.
Sandy, would you introduce yourself first? I'm sorry, would you introduce yourself first? Introduce yourself.
Tell us who you are.
Oh, I don't know. Getting old, I kind of forget that. I'm Sandy Dewitt, and I am the Executive Director to Journey to Recovery. And I was just saying that when you read that, not too many people know who we are. And we are the Peer Sports Center for Butler County. And what that means is we're run by peers, people with mental illness, help people with mental illness to recover to the highest level that they're possible. I did want to just bring up a few things about suicide. And we were established in 2009, so it's not like we're just a fly-by-night organization. I kind of like to compare us to Alcoholics Anonymous. You know, where alcoholics help alcoholics, and it's one of the most, one of the biggest recovery programs and one of the most successful. So that's what we're trying to establish, and peer supporters have been around for like 20 years. So it's not a new concept either. But what we need to look out for is alcohol or substance abuse. A lot of suicides occur when people have been drinking or taking drugs. If a family or friend is hopeless, impulsive, or has aggressive tendencies, has had a history of trauma or abuse, has had a major illness, has had previous suicide attempts, or family history of suicide. And I know a living example of that. There was a family recently where in Wichita, an 18-year-old died by suicide. And last November, her cousin died by suicide. Three years before that, another cousin died by suicide. And three years before that, another cousin died by suicide. So, you know, if there's a family history, you really need to be aware of what to watch. Job loss and financial loss, I think that's one of the reasons that since COVID, the suicide rate has skyrocketed. Loss of relationships, like divorce or death, any of those. Easy access to lethal means, sorry. Men are more liable to complete suicide than women because they do use more lethal means. If there's a local cluster of suicide, sometimes in schools and things like that, you have one suicide, pretty soon you'll have another one. And there's a lot of money that's gone into the young people and children to help with their psychological needs, and that's helpful. If they have a lack of social support and sense of isolation, that's what we try to prevent. We're open five days a week, 1:00 to 5:00. And we give this social support and we get people out of their houses and out of their apartments where they can just sit there and worry and think and plan, you know, suicide, things like that. So if you can get them out amongst society, it's helpful. There's also a stigma associated with asking for help, which we're trying also to overcome because there's nothing wrong with admitting you have mental illness. There's nothing wrong with telling somebody that you feel like you're worthless, you feel like you shouldn't be here. And don't be afraid to ask a family member or a friend if they have thoughts of suicide because you're not going to put it in their head. If they have thoughts of suicide, they've already made their plan and everything. So don't be afraid to bring it up. If they're really despondent and they're really sad, and they've been that way quite a while, bring it up, ask them. Don't be afraid to ask. And then there is lack of healthcare, especially mental health care and substance use treatment. And sometimes that's caused by lack of finances because in order to get into treatment, you have to take a $150 evaluation test. And if you're drinking or drugging, you probably don't have $150 in your back pocket to pay for that. So how do you get in treatment? We can help with that. There's also culture and religious beliefs such as beliefs that suicide is a noble resolution of a personal dilemma. Well, all that is, is a long-term solution to a short-term problem. Most problems have an answer. You might have to search for it, but suicide is not the answer. And if you're exposed to others who have died by suicide in real life or in the media, that could be a precursor, too. I have a few flyers here, I can leave if anybody's interested. And we will be downtown Saturday. We'll have a booth, craft booth, but we'll have information about suicide and mental illness and everything, and we'd be glad to talk to anybody.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have another proclamation for this evening, for Constitution Week. Whereas our founding fathers, in order to secure the blessings of liberty for themselves and their posterity, did ordain and establish a constitution for the United States of America. And whereas it is of the greatest importance that all citizens fully understand the provisions and principles contained in the Constitution in order to support, preserve, and defend it against encroachment. And whereas the 234th anniversary of the signing of the Constitution provides a historic opportunity for all Americans to realize the achievements of the framers of the Constitution and the rights, privileges, and responsibilities it affords. And whereas the independence guaranteed to American citizens, whether by birth or naturalization, should be celebrated by appropriate ceremonies and activities during Constitution Week, September 17th through September 23rd, as designated by proclamation of the President of the United States of America in accordance with Public Law 915. Now therefore, I, Bill Young, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the city of El Dorado, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd as Constitution Week in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and urge all citizens to pay special attention during that week to our federal Constitution and the advantages of American citizenship. In witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the official seal of the city of El Dorado, Kansas to be affixed this 7th day of September 2021. So, don't forget.
You got some hands up back there.
What's up?
I'm Sharon McQuirr.
Hi, Sharon.
And I'm Suzanne Anna French Putney.
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat yourself, I didn't hear anything.
Dive right in.
Okay. I'm Sharon McQuirr, and I'm representing the Suzanne Anna French Putney Chapter Organization here in El Dorado and Eureka. I have with us our Regent, Mrs. Nancy Gordon, and Marcia Todd. And we want to let you know that the Constitution Week was actually developed by the Daughters of American Revolution in 1955. We don't think people understand that, that it was our organization that went to the Senate and got it approved June 7th, 1955. We think it's a very valuable week to concentrate on our Constitution and let us observe it as a full week of understanding to public knowledge what the value of our Constitution means in our lives. Thank you very much.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you. Thank you. So personal appearances are next on the agenda. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only, no action will be taken. Tonight, for personal appearance, we are going to welcome Javin Gonzalez, who is the Destination Services Coordinator for the city of El Dorado.
Good evening, Commissioners. I have a presentation for you.
It's already open at the bottom.
Oh, it's already open. Perfect, makes it easier. All right, so as you guys all know, the 150th Fest is just a few days away. So we wanted to make you aware of some events. There's a lot of things that we've been publicizing pretty frequently, and then there's some new additions that we've just added and some surprises that we have. So the day is going to start at 8:30. The fire department is hosting a 9/11 memorial service. So this is going to be honoring the first responders and remember those who are lost on the 20th anniversary. We recognize that this is a somber day and, you know, it's, there's a lot to go into that. So that's going to be at the Butler County Courthouse. Following that, the El Dorado Parks and Rec Department is going to be hosting a pickleball tournament, which you can contact us if you want to get involved in that. That's going to be at 9:00 AM at North Main Park. Following the pickleball tournament, or at the same time, the pickleball tournament is going to be the Downtown Parade. So that's going to follow the parade route. It's going to start at Gordy Park, go up Central to Taylor, down First Street to Main, and then over back to Gordy Park off of Central. So we have more than 65 floats from different local businesses and organizations that are going to be parked. So it's going to be a really good-sized parade, and that's going to start at 10:00 AM. We have a car show that's going to be at the YMCA parking lot. This is hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. So it's going to be there in the parking lot as well as on Main Street and on Second Street. That will go from 12 to about 4:00. On Main Street, we're going to have several different aspects. So the majority of the festival is going to be between Second Street and, sorry, Second Street and Central there on Main. We're going to have an artist market, so it's going to have a lot of local artists and other vendors who are sponsors. They're going to be there on North Main between First and, or on Main between Second and First Street. That's going to go from 12 to 6:00. We're also going to have a number of food trucks. Those are going to be on the 200 block. Those will be open from 11 to 9:00, so we're going to have those for the majority of the festival, as well as two beer gardens.
200 block of what?
Main Street.
North or south?
North, yeah. And then we'll also have a kid zone that's going to be close to the corner of Central and Main. It's going to have a lot of different kids' activities, and that'll be open until 8:00, till sunset. We also have the barbecue cook-off. That's going to be at the El Dorado Family Dentistry. The grills are going to start at 12:00. We'll have judging at 2:30. Anybody can enter, they'll just contact Oz Events for entry into the barbecue cook-off. Our cornhole tournament, also hosted by the Chamber, is going to be at Empress Bank in the parking lot. It's going to start, registration's going to start at 1:00, and then the bags will start to be thrown in at 2:00. But it'll be, anybody who wants to enter, you can do it in different teams, and you win a custom set of cornhole boards if you win that tournament. One of the surprises, we're actually having a mural painted for the city of El Dorado to celebrate our 150th anniversary. This is an art collaboration with the group Brick Mob. A lot of people know them from their murals on the new baseball stadium in Wichita. They're awesome professionals, they're a collaboration of different artists. So they came up with this concept from the vintage greeting cards. It's actually a big art project across the United States. You register these murals and people travel to take pictures in front of them. So they have taken different iconic scenes and parts from El Dorado history and culture to incorporate into the wording on there. So the location of that is actually a surprise. They're working on it as we speak.
We don't like surprises.
Javin, go back to that and tell us a little bit about what the mural's going to mean, what's in each of the pictures, so the people at home know.
Inside the letters is just a different aspect of Kansas or El Dorado culture or history. So El Dorado is a big baseball city, so we incorporated baseball into it. We honor our history with the oil derrick there. We also have sanding for El Dorado Lake, sunflowers, beer, the courthouse, the flint hills, and then fishing, again referencing the lake. Concerts are going to start at 5:00. We try to get a nice mix of concerts, so we have everything from punk rock to country. So we have Vegan Shark, which is a band out of Dodge City that'll start the show. Chasin' Co, a local band, followed by Matt Ingalls. Moving into the evening, at 7:30, we had Big Fat Fun, which is a pretty well-known Wichita cover band. They're very high-energy, they're great for getting the crowd kind of pumped up and ready to go. We also have a sponsorship with KFDI, so they're going to be helping us with some of the announcements and some promotions throughout the day. So we'll have the KFDI DJs out that day, kind of cheering the crowd on and getting things going. We'll have a little bit of time in between that concert and our headliner, where we've hired some fire dancers. It's called Phlox Kansas. So they'll be performing actually behind, or in front of the stage, further back, and that will happen at 8:30. So in between that, kind of that dead time, while we're waiting for the headliner to play. Our headliner is Kaylee Hammack, she's a rising country star. She will take the stage about 9:00. She has a band with her, she's done a couple songs with Reba, she's on the Up and Up, so we're excited to have her here in El Dorado.
Where is the stage set up?
Oh, the stage is going to be at Central and Main.
Central and Main, thank you.
And for Kaylee, we are actually doing some giveaways for meet-and-greet tickets on the Experience El Dorado Facebook page and the City of El Dorado Facebook page. So you can follow those if you want a chance to meet Ms. Kaylee. In addition, the Kansas Oil Museum is also going to be doing some different events that day. They have a full schedule and the museum's going to be free to the public. So they're going to have a living history lesson in a couple of different locations there at the museum along with showing the Kansas Crossroads El Dorado Documentary that was on PBS, that was done just a few months ago. They'll have a scavenger hunt, and they'll also be doing some of the vintage oil equipment demonstrations, which ties really nicely into honoring our history of El Dorado. Just make sure to follow Experience El Dorado on Facebook. We're going to be posting a lot of the events, there's a little more specifics. We'll be unveiling the location of the mural. We'll have some more information about scheduling and some other little activities that we have planned for that day, and some more surprises on Facebook. So you can follow us on Facebook for more information. And that is it. Do you guys have any questions?
It's exciting, Javin. The team, you and staff, and the whole team involved, put in a ton of work. I'm really excited to see this weekend fly, so.
Yeah, we're excited, looks like the weather's going to be good, so I think we're on a good roll.
Good. Thanks for all your work. Okay, next on the agenda, we have public comment. Sorry, my iPad locked, stand by. Okay, persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are under the jurisdiction of the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentation is for information purposes only. No action will be taken. I understand we have the Miss El Dorado winners, folks here tonight, to come up and talk to us. So I'm super excited to hear about that. So come on up and introduce yourselves and let us know what's happened.
Thank you for letting us be here. My name's Deanna Vaughn. I live at 300 South Main here in El Dorado. I'm the Director of the Miss El Dorado Ambassador Pageant, and I'm going to let each of the girls introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Bowden, and I'm Miss Golden Road. I just want to thank you guys so much. We had a really successful scholarship pageant two, three weekends ago. Time is running, but thank you guys so much.
My name is Faith Grove, I'm Miss El Dorado Princess. Thank you guys for letting us participate in this and letting us represent our city through this action.
Hi, I'm Jordan Burford, I'm Miss Sunflower Fest, and this is my sister.
Hi, my name is Joanna Burford, and I am Little Miss El Dorado.
And thank you so much. We are so proud to be able to show our city pride for El Dorado.
Hi, my name is Miami Durango, and I'm Miss Teen El Dorado, and thank you guys again for all your support for us.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Hannah Reed, and I am Miss Teen Sunflower Fest. I just want to say thank you guys all so much, and I can't wait for the 150th Fest.
And then hello, all you familiar faces. I am Sierra Marie Vaughn, your Miss El Dorado. And as a tangible recognition of our appreciation for the city of El Dorado, you probably can't see it over there, there we go. We have a giant, wonderful campus with all of the candidates' signatures expressing our thanks and a picture of the final crowning moment. So we're so excited to represent El Dorado, not only during 150th Fest, but also throughout the coming years. Thank you so much. I'd like to take their photo with you all if you would come down.
Did I put it over there? Oh, we got it, pretty good. Yay, 150th Fest.
Yay, 150th Fest.
Do another one. And, thank you. Oh, good job.
Thank you all so much.
Oh, good, thank you.
Well, that was awesome. I want to really thank all of you, and we couldn't have a better group of young ladies representing El Dorado. So super excited to see what y'all have in store for us over the next year and the years to come. So thanks for all that you guys do as well. Other public comment, I was going to see if Pastor Crook would like to just give us during this time just a brief update of what they've got going on this weekend. You mentioned the revival next week, and if you wouldn't mind giving us an update on that.
I would. My name's David Crook, I'm the pastor of First Southern Baptist Church of Quail Run, Quail Run up near the lake. And so I'm pleased to update you, I thank you for allowing me to do this. We have, you have been given a, you have a wonderful staff. I know you don't use public comments for staff issues, but they have been very helpful. Javin in particular has been very helpful to us getting to be able to pull this off in some ways. We had to shift locations. We are going to erect, hopefully, at the end of this week, a tent down in front, where the old tennis course used to be, down in front of the, between Central and the fairgrounds. And we will be hosting from Sunday night, next Sunday night through the following Saturday, each night, a rally at 6:30 PM for our community to come together. It has been a tough year and a half, and now exceeding that, especially with the recent surge in COVID pandemic cases. It has been a trial of a year, and it has divided us so much that we want to see this community come together. So the churches are coming together, from many stripes, many denominations, many different congregations are coming together to do this. We're going to have a speaker from Derby come in, we're going to have some musicians, both local and from the area, come in. And each night, we're going to be honoring a different segment of our society. And we invite you, as the city leaders, to please come out Sunday night to help us start. We want to express our appreciation to you for what you have had to endure for the last year and a half, and we want to be an encouragement to you and let us, as the church, try to help you bring our city together in the wake of the birthday celebration. Each week, each night of the week, we'll be doing a different group. We will be doing educators, honoring educators on Monday. Didn't come prepared, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. But Tuesday night, I believe, we are honoring... We had a meeting this morning, and I just got back from vacation, so I am still in loop mode. But we're going to be honoring a different segment. First responders will be Tuesday, Wednesday will be youth night, Thursday will be healthcare workers, Friday night will be the Butler Community College night, and Saturday will be veterans and bikers. We're going to have some events for them. So start at 6:30. Many of those nights, we're going to be serving food, we're going to be serving birthday cake and ice cream for the city on Sunday night. And various times, we're going to be doing different things. So we invite you to come. So we invite you to come, we please ask you to please pass the word to your staff as our city leaders, especially for Sunday night, because we want to honor at every level of the people who have had to endure many difficult things the last year and a half. So thank you for the opportunity, thank you to your staff. David, thank you, I enjoyed your note that you sent, I got back from vacation and got that, and I really appreciated it, but thank you to your staff and the accommodations they have helped us to make, and so we are very grateful, and we are hoping that this will be something that will be spoken of in many communities around here, and for the way it has come together, and for hopefully some of the results of bringing a community together under an incredible message of hope by trusting in God. And so it is our hope that you will be there, and you will encourage those around you to be there as much as you can, so thank you very much. If you have any specific questions for me to answer.
No, I just wanted to get an update and figured the best way to do is to catch you off guard, so.
You did, you caught me off guard, but I'm grateful for the opportunity, so.
I wanted to apologize, I won't be there Sunday. I'll be at Kansas City Chiefs football game.
You know, that is, that is kind of in the back of my rear end, a little thorn too, because I want to watch that, I want to watch that so bad, so indeed, well, good for you, Greg.
I hope it turns out really well for you.
Thank you, thank you. Please come another night if you are so inclined, so. Any other questions?
Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Have a good night. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent, I'm sorry, is there anyone else here for public comment? Nope, okay. The next item is the consent agenda. On tonight's consent agenda, we'll consider the approval of city commission minutes from August 16th, 2021, and approval of appropriation ordinance 08-21 in the amount of $1,166,403.95. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move that the consent agenda is presented be approved.
Second.
Motion is second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. All right, we need to open a public hearing, a public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2022 budget. So David, you want to give us some background, or should I just go ahead and open the public hearing?
I'm just going to give you a quick background, and then you can open the public hearing. So I have one slide, pretty easy, pretty simple. Today, you're going to open a public hearing to receive comments on the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. What this slide here shows is kind of two different things. The, I'm going to focus first on the kind of blue, grayish-blue line there at the top. So that line represents the mill levy, okay? So in 2021, the adopted budget, we had a mill levy of 55.909 mils, based on our valuation. That mill levy generated $5.26 million in property taxes. So what this Senate Bill 13 does, that we have to do as part of this budget process now, is we have to inform taxpayers if the city desires to exceed what is called the revenue neutral rate. So what that means is, the middle column there represents the revenue neutral rate. The prior year, the mill levy was 55.909, in order to remain neutral, meaning that we would bring in the same amount of property taxes the prior year, the mill levy would have to decrease to 54.805 mils. The reason for that reduction would be because the city's assessed valuation increased, and so to bring in the same amount of property taxes, the mill levy would have to then decrease. However, you also see to the right, a third bar chart, which is a proposed mill levy of 57.792 mils, which would bring in $5.6 million. This proposed mill levy is based on commentary from the commission with respect to the upcoming budget and the desire to accept not only the increased valuation that is the result of county increase in valuation, but also increasing that another 1.88 mils to hire two additional parks and rec personnel, primarily for maintenance and/or recreation responsibilities. So in order to do that, we have to not only accept the increased valuation, but we also have to increase the amount of money that we will generate from the mill levy, and so therefore, that proposed budget goes up to 57.792 in order to encapsulate those two items. As part of the revenue neutral rate hearing, all of you are doing tonight is taking comments on the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. You will not actually set the rate until the September 20th hearing, at which time you will then be able to determine whether you want to remain at 57.792 mils, or you'd like to go to 54.0, I'm sorry, 54.805 mils, or some combination thereof. You will not be able to exceed 57.792 mils. So with that, I will take any questions that you all may have with respect to the revenue neutral rate before you open your public hearing.
Yes, again, just to reiterate, tonight's public hearing and the potential motion or action at the end of the public hearing is just to acknowledge that it's our intention to set a mill levy that may exceed the 54.805.
That's right.
But it may not, so tonight's just the public hearing piece, and then we'll actually dive into the mill levy piece of it at the next meeting.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that again. You guys have any questions for David? All right, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing concerning the city's intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate for the 2022 budget. Give it just a minute, in case, you know, someone's rushing down here to have a conversation I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, this was, this was publicized on our agenda, so the meeting started at 6:30, so if someone wanted to make a comment on it, I think they would hope that they'd be here. So I'm going to close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2832, a resolution of the City of El Dorado, Kansas, to levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate.
Second.
The motion is second, is there any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next item is old business, and there is no old business, so move on to Agenda Item Number 13, new business, adoption of the standard traffic ordinance and uniform public
Good evening, Mayor, Commission, Curt Zeman, El Dorado Police Department. Once a year, we usually come back and we're requesting you adopt the standard traffic ordinance and the uniform public offense code. Just about a month or so ago, they came out with the 2021 changes. These reflect changes that legislature made with either House bills or Senate bills. I can tell you that there's a whole list of changes for both. Most of them are just definitions, they've changed just a tad bit, or changed some grammatical errors they found one way or the other. What I want to do is just kind of highlight some of the new additions, or actually new laws that they've added. New definitions are for authorized utility or communications vehicle, funeral escort, funeral lead vehicle, and funeral procession are the new definitions. There's a new section now for funeral processions. Funeral processions and parades just be kind of lumped into the same ordinance and the standard traffic ordinance. Funeral processions have their own ordinance now. It defines what the lead vehicle can do, can't do, what the people that are in the procession like having your lights on, emergency flashers, stuff like that, so that's new. Passing a stationary authorized utility or communications vehicle, that's a new law this year, it's similar to the passing of a sanitation vehicle they came out with a couple of years ago, that's almost the same language, but they define that utility or telecommunications vehicle as a electric utility, or like gas service, or the telecommunication like the phone or the cable truck, so basically, you have to slow down and use caution before you pass those vehicles. That's pretty much, oh, excuse me, there's a new section of display of a license plate, and that was just added to define where license plates are installed on certain vehicles. I mean, they've added stuff like, if it's a dump truck, you can put the license plate in the front instead of the back, and you wouldn't see it if bed's up, that sort of Failure to comply with a traffic citation, that's not new, but they have added a portion where if a person can show the court that this will cause a manifest hardship on them or their family, they can petition the court to either reduce or eliminate some of those fines for court costs. That's a new section. That's all in the standard traffic ordinance. Do you have any questions on any of that stuff? Unified public.
I do, I'm sorry, just to clarify, so, so somebody gets a traffic citation, and they convince the court that they don't have money to pay it, that...
It's a little more than that, can articulate to the court that they've got an obvious hardship because of it, and it's going to be up to the court to decide if that's applicable or not, so it would be up to each individual judge.
Then they shouldn't have gotten the citation to start with.
Yeah. We don't make the laws, we just try to force them.
All right, thank you.
Yep, Uniform Public Offense Code. Sexual battery was amended, they took the spousal exception out of it. There was also an editor's note that updated to a response of the City of Shawnee versus Adim, it was a Kansas Supreme Court case, so they just rewrote that a little bit to comply with that. Intent to permanently deprive was changed, this has to do in dealing with a theft of a motor vehicle, and those changes were added to that section. Trespassing on a critical infrastructure facility is a new law. It created several criminal offenses on trespassing in critical infrastructure facilities. That would include like water facilities, wastewater treatment plants, that sort of thing. There's some requirements in there about they have to be fenced or properly signed, or that sort of thing, not unlike the criminal trespass law already is, but that is a new They updated the electioneering law, amended an offense of electioneering, added a limitation of when a ballot can be handled by candidate. There's a new section of violation of executive order under KSA 48925 mandating a curfew or prohibiting public entry. And that is pretty much it on the U-Pop. Any questions?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Do I have a motion?
I move that ordinance number 1356, and ordinance amending section 10 dot 04 dot 010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, Edition 2021, be passed and approved.
Second.
Motion is second, Tabitha, can we please have a roll call?
Mr. Wilkinson.
Yes.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Mr. Bev.
Yes. Yes.
And a second motion.
I move that ordinance number 1357, an ordinance amending section 9 dot 04 dot 010 of the El Dorado Municipal Code pertaining to traffic and referencing the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas Cities, Edition 2021, be passed and approved.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call please.
Mary Ann.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis.
Yes.
Commissioner Bev.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes. Thank you again, chief. Agenda item number 14, consideration of a motion to participate in a KDOT corridor management study at a not-to-achieve cost of $11,100 concerning the K254 Highway Corridor in partnership with other local governing entities located along the corridor.
City Commission, the K254 Corridor Development Association recently had a presentation from KDOT regarding a safety study that was done on, I'll say, about half of the corridor on Wichita's side of the 254 corridor. That information was shared with the group, and based on that, KDOT kind of recommended that the group proceed with making a formal request to KDOT regarding a corridor management study as the next step in studying the corridor, specifically to identify safety and efficiency improvements that could be done to the corridor to make it function more efficiently as well as safer, and then that study is then used for future justification for capital projects and investment by the state. So what you're being asked to do today, because we don't yet know how much this study's going to cost, is to basically express the city's intent to participate in the study should it proceed. The way it works on a corridor management study is, KDOT, I'm sorry, KDOT requires a request of local entities that reside along the corridor to request the corridor management study. Then, once that's been completed, KDOT will then solicit an engineering firm to conduct the study, and then once one's selected, they'll negotiate a price as was a full scale. At that point in time, we will know the cost of the study, and the participating entities located along that corridor will then be provided a formal agreement, which will also define their explicit cost for that study. Right now, those particular players are going to be Central County, Butler County, Bel Air, Tuanda, El Dorado, then the cities that are located along the corridor. So the participating entities, it should be noted, have to be a local governing entity, so a county or a city. In addition to that, KDOT does have a pool of funds that they can tap into, so they will have an amount of money that they will allocate to the corridor management study, and then whatever balance is left over from that would be the local match, that would be then divided up amongst those entities. Our match amount is estimated at about $11,100 based upon our linear mileage, as well as a couple other factors that go into that equation. So this does not necessarily commit us to participating in the study, although if it moves forward, we will be asked to contribute financially in participating in the corridor. Ultimately, we benefit, even though we're on the end of the corridor, the eastern end of the corridor, we do stand to benefit significantly because we're, obviously, K254 has a significant connection to Wichita and beyond, but we also have a significant interchange at Boyer and Central and the turnpike there that will also be a component of the study as well. So with that, I'll take any questions, Deanna. Can you answer those?
You ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager prepare a letter of intent to the 254 Corridor Association stating its intent to participate in the KDOT corridor management study for the K254 Highway Corridor.
Second.
Motion is second, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number 15, consideration of a professional services agreement with Ozark Laser Systems Incorporated for GPS fixed base station.
Yes, Mayor, Commission, we're asking you to consider authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Ozark Laser. What this agreement entails is they would place a GPS base station on the public Um, what this agreement entails is they would place a GPS base station on a public works facility. Uh, that base station would be established in known coordinate, in known elevation, um, and, uh, we would then be able to use that information as we go out and survey for projects or various things around town. Um, we would get use of this base station free, um, no cost to the city. The city is agreeing to provide power and internet access to this base station. We've had a similar, a situation in the past where we had a base station on City Hall. Technology has changed greatly. Back in those days, it was cell-driven. It'll accomplish a lot more, uh, with what we have today. Um, when we go out and survey on a project, we have to take what we consider our own mobile base with us and kind of work around this mobile base. Um, with this fixed base system on Public Works Building, we'll be able to go out in the community and let us know this and start being able to collect data. Individuals working in the areas, contractors, um, farmers, that sort of thing, can, um, be part of the subscription service that Ozark Laser provides, and be able to use that fixed base system. They have these all around the region, um, so they have a number of subscribers, and when they're in the area, um, they would be able to utilize this, and also helps with some triangulation in Wichita, El Dorado, and another community like your report.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to sign a contract with Ozark Laser.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing that there is none, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Three, oh. Agenda Item Number 16, consideration of a professional services agreement with SAM LLC, S-A-M LLC for GPS mapping services.
Yes, so what we're asking you to consider denied is entering into an agreement with SAM, uh, previously known as, oh, gosh, I think it's the, uh, been around for, for quite a while, in providing, uh, GIS services. And what we have today is a, um, GIS system that was created a number of years ago, utilizing GPS technology that's accurate within 10 foot. So what SAM is proposing is to go to every manhole in this community, pop that manhole, shoot flowline elevations at the bottom of manholes, shoot top of manhole elevations, do an overall condition assessment of those manholes. And while they're doing that, they will also, um, survey in our water systems, so valves, hydrants, so that we can get a stronger GIS system put in place. It's really important. We have a lot of turnover, a lot of older guys that, you know, are very familiar with the system, we're getting closer to it, and relying on paper maps or just knowledge, it's time for us to give a little better accurate, uh, model that we can utilize. The sewer portion of this project, um, would be a lump sum payment of $120,507, and that would be paid out of the sewer fund. Um, the water side of things is $33,396. Significant difference there is each manhole, they are putting eyes on it, popping manhole, getting down, uh, taking photos. These photos would be then tagged into our GIS system, so I could be sitting in my office, or David, or whoever else can have access to this, click, open up a photo, photo of the manhole, what's going on, and then we can continue to build off this system to, with our super master plan when it's complete, be able to identify project areas, because this is a brick manhole, we saw signs of infiltration. This pipe is clay, we need more of a TV camera through it. So it would really help us, uh, get a hold of our system. As part of the super master plan, as, as we've been progressing through the big, um, through that, we have identified a number of issues with our system. Are just things that exist in backyards, or rear lots, or along creeks, that, you know, probably haven't had ice cream on them for a long time, but we're finding issues. So it's really going to help us, you know, handle our infrastructure and be able to better forecast. Future projects, as well as really help us locate that infrastructure, one calls, I can't remember how many one-call tickets we give a day, but it's quite significant. So this information is used for monitoring our YouTube's.
I find that just fascinating, that they can do all that.
Do I have a motion?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with SAM LLC and GPS mapping services of the City of El Dorado Underground Public Infrastructure.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? I had a couple of quick questions.
Yep.
Um, so when we look at the fiscal impact, you said there's a lump sum to be paid out of the sewer fund, and some money to be paid out of the water fund, these will come out of our reserves. Um, and if I remember the numbers correctly, that still leaves us within our kind of the, the boundaries that we've set, um, as a commission for guidelines within those reserves. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Um, so that's it for the regular part of the agenda. We do have a land bank consent agenda. Um, so Agenda Item Number 17, approval of a memorandum of understanding and real estate contract with JB Rentals LLC.
So the contract that you have here before you deals with the property that was donated to the land bank, I think it was two meetings ago. Um, JB Rentals LLC, John Banks, uh, is the party that would be, uh, a signatory to this, and the way it would work is that he is agreeing to purchase the property for $13,750, uh, but he won't pay that amount until such time as he builds a building on the property, and then finds a tenant to lease, uh, the property to, at which time, it will be, um, pulled out of, the land bank will in essence sell him the property business agreement for that amount, uh, there, and then at which time he will be, not he, well, he would, he and the tenant will be liable then for property taxes, uh, on property. Uh, so while it's in the land bank, uh, there will be no property taxes assessed on the property, because that is one of the benefits of, of a land bank. Uh, the land bank will retain ownership of the property until even the following actions occur, the developer requests to purchase the property in the land bank, the developer leases a building constructed on the property to a third-party tenant, or a period of five years from the effective date of the agreement passes without lease with a third-party tenant. So there's kind of a deadline, if the deadline's not met, and a tenant is found for the building, uh, at that point in time, the property will come out of the land bank, and then it will be, uh, it will be subject to taxes. And that's, that's basically the, that's basically the agreement as it's written there. So if you have any questions, I'll take those now.
Have a motion.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding and a real estate, uh, real estate contract with JB Rentals LLC.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, nothing on, uh, for discussion items, so we'll move to City Commission Advisory Board Updates.
Uh, we have not met.
Library board hadn't met.
I have nothing to report.
Perfect, okay. I'm good, too. Um, I, I guess I would say this, so, uh, Friday night, last Friday night, the El Dorado, I'm sorry, I don't, I didn't see how Circle ended up doing, but I know that El Dorado-
I believe Circle won.
Had a successful football game Friday night. This week, they'll be back in town, um, playing Augusta, at BG, so.
What about Butler?
Butler did not have a successful night last Saturday night, and they are in hutch this weekend. So, I was trying to avoid that conversation, great, thank you. Uh, so this, yeah, so home, home game Friday night, um, for El Dorado High School at BG Stadium, and they're playing Augusta. So it should be a pretty packed crowd, I think. Community National Bank is doing a hamburger feed ahead of time, where they take donations, um, for both the Augusta Booster Club and the El Dorado High School Booster Club. Um, the Community National Bank has, has been a good partner with the Booster Club, um, historically. Uh, here, they do that once a year, and then if we play, since they have a location in Augusta, and they have, um, some of their staff and everyone, and Tuwanda, Tuwanda as well, whenever we have a Circle El Dorado game, they generally do that, too, so. It's been, it'll be good, so come on out Friday night and watch some football. Hopefully, the weather holds, and that'll kind of kick us into an awesome weekend, hopefully, so. City Managers Report.
Uh, so just a reminder, we have a meet and greet with federal, state, local officials Saturday, September 11th, at 11:00 AM to noon. This is, uh, Senator Roger Marshall called and coordinated this for us. So after the parade, swing down to Brucko and, um, do some meet and greeting. Um, it's also election season in earnest, that means that, uh, you can, you may start placing signs around town, you may see signs around town rather, uh, or you may be placing them. Um, that, just a reminder, they can't have a place within the public right-of-way, so that's generally defined as the between, you know, the middle of the street and the sidewalk, although that's, so generally speaking, that's, that's where the public right-of-way is. So if there is a sidewalk, make sure it's put on the, I don't know if you see inside or outside, it's-
Closest to the house.
House side.
House side of the sidewalk, thank you. If it's, if there's no sidewalk, then put it as close to your house as you can. Um, or I guess it says here, we're in areas without sidewalk, about eight feet, uh, from the street is, is approximately where the right-of-way would be. Um, so that's just an FYI, uh, that's all I have. Obviously, we have the 150, so come on downtown. We are looking for some volunteers, uh, so if you know of anyone or any groups that I think we're looking, as Jayden said, look for about 10, but, uh, we can always take more. So we've got some jobs, um, that we need a little bit of assistance with, so if you know of anybody, or if you have a few spare moments, uh, we can appreciate some, make sure volunteer help.